All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. New Britain Board of Education Regular School Boarding, School Board Meeting, October 2nd, 2023. The time is 6:02. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mrs. Moreno, would you please lead us?
Hi. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You could please call the roll.
I have a feeling.
Here.
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Distro.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a C.
Yo.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a K.
Here.
Ms. Barbara Moreno.
Here.
Ms. Annie Carter.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
And Christina Santana.
Right here.
Thank you. If we could please have a moment of meditation? Thank you. We have public participation. Justin Santiago. You could come right up to the podium?
First time, so.
It's okay.
Is the microphone up?
It is.
Okay. God bless everyone today. I'm here in behalf of my daughter, who was assaulted in New Braun High School September 14th. The school had met with her at a mediation. I was never informed. I was never called. And they thought everything was okay. And when my daughter got out of school, she physically got attacked by another student. Today, my daughter's here. She's going to be speaking. Can't go back to school. I had to take her to the doctor, psychiatrist. And I'm a little disappointed with the school system because as a parent, I think I sent my child to school to be in a safe place, not in a place where she's going to be attacked and having nightmares, can't sleep, and it's very hard for her. She's only 15 years old. I was a student in New Braun High more than 20 something years ago. I know that youth, we make a lot of mistakes. Not here to judge no one. But I believe that the school failed my daughter when they never called us to inform us of what was going on because the girl had already threatened her and they had a mediation. And eventually, the girl never accepted what was going on. And she said everything was okay. They thought it was okay. But when my daughter got out of school, she was attacked. It's not the same speaking about it. If you see the video, it's disgusting that all the other students were there recording. And one student, eventually, that I told the principal, I want him to get actions also, saying, "Kill her. Kill her," while the girl officially attacked my daughter, who is not a person of violence, which we always taught her as an ex-person that comes from that background, not a very pleased background. But I learned to change, and people change, and I understand that. But I'm here to see what the Board of Education is going to do to change this so it doesn't happen to another child. What do we need to do to stop the violence in school and have other kids bullying other kids? What do we need to do to start going in the right direction? And today, I'm here with my daughter, who wants to express herself, that I know is going to be a little tough for her. But I told her she has to do it. She has to stand up and speak for the ones that don't dare to talk. Amen?
Thank you. Is it Eliana Santiago?
Hello. My name is Eliana. It's on travel. On Thursday, September 14th, I went to New Braun High School. I was assaulted. I was a student. Then I once called my best friend, Mariah Cole. On that day, my best friend, Mackenzie, was informed by someone else that somebody wanted to fight her. And me and her were both confused, but we had the conversation and went to class. I was informed by another student going to my second period that Mariah was looking for me and that Mariah wanted to fight me and that Mariah's friend, Yur Elise Martinez, wanted to fight Mackenzie. I instantly started to shake and get scared. Many know me as not being the fighting type and that I go to church. I was in shock. I go to my second period class and texted Mackenzie to inform her that it was Mariah and Yur Elise. So Mackenzie went to the game and informed them. We had a mediation. I was pulled out by Mr. O and taken to the mediation room. In the room, it was Mariah, Yur Elise, Mackenzie, Mr. Jones, Mrs. Ty, Mr. O, and another guest. Mr. O started to ask questions and the rest of the adults. Mr. Jones tried to talk to Mariah and have a mature conversation, and she wouldn't listen. She started to curse and act out, so she was pulled out of the room by Mr. Jones. Mackenzie and Yur Elise talked, and I sat there. I think it was Mrs. Ty or Mr. O that asked what was going on between me and Mariah. And I said that I distanced myself because she does things that I don't do, but we had no problems with each other. Yur Elise and Mackenzie still talked. Mr. Jones walked in after a few minutes and said that Mariah was fine, but she felt as if I had changed and that I don't talk to her anymore. And I understood, and I told him the exact thing and why I did. After Mackenzie and Yur Elise talked, then I thought everything was going to be okay. Walking back to my class, I told Mr. O that I wanted to talk to Mariah and have a mature conversation, me and her one-on-one. But he said that was probably, that she was probably still mad, so just to leave her alone for the day and do it another day. After my second period.
Excuse me? She was still mad? And he knew that she was still mad, correct? Everybody heard that, right?
After my second period and the rest of my classes, I saw Mariah two times in the hall. And I didn't think much of it, but I wanted, but to want to talk to her. I went to my last period and did my work as usual. Me and Mackenzie met after class and went to go get her color guard flag. So we went from 300s to the B and locker room. I waited for Mackenzie. She got her flag, and we both exited the building from the trophy case doors on the left side. Me and Mackenzie walk, and I look up and I see a huge crowd and Mariah in the middle. Her hair was tied up, and I instantly knew she was going to want to fight me. I told Mackenzie that she's going to want to fight me, and Mackenzie said, "No, she's not. We're leaving here as fast as possible." Me and Mackenzie walk behind the statue and start to speed walk. Me and Mackenzie were split by a little group of friends. In the corner of my eye, I see a big mop of people coming near me. I try to walk faster. I turn. Saw Mariah, and I told her, "You're not going to touch me," and she did. I tried what I could to defend myself, but it was hard since I wasn't ready. After, um, after the fight, the guard Pagan picks me up, and I'm crying and scared and wanting to go home. And my friend Yanni comes, and I go to him to cover me. The guard grabs my stuff and says that he has to take me to the security room, but I just wanted to go home. The girl, um, sorry, I wanted to go home. There was one girl that hugged me, and then the guard took me out of there and walked me to the security room. I tried my best to cover my face, but I know everyone saw. I was nonstop crying to the point where I couldn't breathe. They got the nurse. She attended me, told me to breathe, and that I was going to be okay. In the room next to me was Mackenzie, also crying. We got asked questions, and Mr. O came to write a statement, but I couldn't since I cried so much. She wrote it for me. We were in those rooms for a while until we were told that our parents were there. They took me out, and I see my parents. I go to my mom, and I start, and I start to nonstop crying in her arms. The way I felt, I don't wish on anyone. Shortly after, we talked in this nature and how my parents were informed. And after we left, the video was already on social media. What happened, replays in my head. I can't stop crying. I have no motivation for anything anymore.
We also had to take her to the emergency room because she had a bunch of lumps on her head. And the following Sunday, Thursday, Sunday, she had woke up with her neck spasm that she also had to go to a medical emergency room. And she'd been getting therapy for that also because of the impact of the violence that the girl jumped on.
My mental hope has been the worst that it's ever been. I've had pain in my neck and headaches, bad pain. I physically and mentally cannot sleep. Even after everything Mariah did to me, I still forgive her and all the pain she has caused me. And if she were here, I would hug her and ask her why and where did I go wrong. I don't hate her because at some point we were friends, and she made me happy. There were times where I do get angry because I didn't deserve that, and I don't wish this on her or anyone else. I'm also angry how no one helped me, how not even the people that I would talk to, not even a teacher or a guard. No one helped me until it was over. Mariah, as you can see in the video, walked off like nothing. The guard only grabbed me slowly, and nobody got her. I'm also very angry because she has a bad record. The school knows that. But she still walks those New Braun High School halls, also how nobody informed my parents until after everything. And how New Braun High School is so corrupt that no one does anything for a change, and it's been the same for a very long time. Everyone knows it. The only change I've seen is the bathroom change, and that is it. The school has, still has fights, still has students doing things that they shouldn't. From the looks of it, no one cares until the school gets charged or sued, and that's when the school ends, and it's rare. I'm not only speaking for myself, but for those students that have gone through the same thing and parents that couldn't help their child. I want to be, I want my voice to be heard by many because when New Braun High School allowed, although they say they don't, but they did, it's highly unacceptable. And I'm not the only one who thinks it. From, from what I remember, I don't even think I saw any guards or any adult outside when it happened, which there usually is, but they lacked on that. Nobody from the school or this district has reached out to me, which I find crazy because it's always, our students should be safe, and I don't feel safe at all. It's ridiculous how I have to go through something that I don't deserve, and there needs to be a change. I shouldn't have to feel unsafe in this, in, in school. The place where they say they care about students, when to me, they don't. Actions speak way louder than words. I'm going to fight for my justice the way I should, and I will do everything in my power to achieve that, you know? Students should have to ever feel in their life like school isn't safe. And I don't mean to sound rude, but I want people to know, especially this district, that it's not okay. Thank you for listening.
She's a native student. Her grades right now are a little bit not that great because of the situation she's going through, but her grades speak for themselves. And it's sad that the teacher knew that the girl was still upset, or wherever he is, and still didn't do anything. Didn't even give us a phone call. It is sad. And I don't think it's right. And this is my daughter. Today is a life. Thank God. There's been situations where in California, a kid got pushed, hit his head on the wall, and he died. I'm blessed today because I have my daughter. But I'm going to guarantee you guys that I'm going to speak loud, and everyone's going to hear me and my daughter. And this board, or wherever I have to go, so something can get done in New Braun High. I know. I was a student there. And sometimes we'd give a blind eye, and it has to change. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? One final time. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Thank you. Move on to committee reports. So curriculum.
Uh, sorry.
It's okay.
Um, yes, curriculum, um, met and, uh, sorry, can you come back for a minute?
Sure. Excuse me. Policy.
So we have a couple of policies coming for the board tonight. One around cell phones, and we have early on a visitor.
All right. Thank you. Personnel.
We had, we had two items, uh, two, uh, job descriptions revised. Those items will be on set tonight. One for cafeteria.
Oh, that's right for the, yeah. Thank you. Finance, facilities, and transportation.
Yeah, we have quite a bit of items that we went over on the agenda. From everything from renewals, some purchase orders, outstanding contracts. We also had a long, long discussion of flooding at Slade, especially from Mr. Prokop concerning the concerns that our servers are all based in there. We discussed if any flooding could happen in that room. Lucky, has not been an issue yet, but I was informed that we are a node for the district, for a couple of surrounding districts. And while there are backup systems, if we were able to have outage equipped for a few minutes, it could affect a few of the surrounding towns for internet access. So we, uh, once we got our facilities report, uh, said that we, uh, months ago, Dr. Gasper might be giving that facility report.
It's, it's in draft form now, yes.
Yeah. That we might, uh, look at some alternatives for getting a possibly relocation or some kind of alternatives for possibly the server room. And quite a few of the items that are on the present agenda are the purchase orders and other items we discussed.
Thank you. Curriculum.
Thank you. Um, so we had a presentation of a multi-level department, a new cover curriculum, revealing revision for students who have just arrived in the district and need that first year construction in, uh, in their search and acquisition. And we also have an official update regarding others on the courses that both state.
Thank you. Board reports. Does anybody, anybody have anything to report?
Um, in the spirit of Hispanic Heritage Month, which actually started last month on the 15th and ends just shy couple weeks, uh, but we stay Hispanic. We're just celebrating it. What we're going to be doing is we actually on Thursday rose the Puerto Rican flag in a celebration with CICD, the Parade Committee for Hartford. Um, and then we're also going to be representing New Britain, which is the honored city. And we're going to be having a few students with us to be marching as well. And we're going to be, um, parading in Hartford on Sunday. So we are looking forward to that. And then just got to jump in.
Thank you. Mr. Kane.
Well, I am concerned about the information we heard in the public participation tonight. I do want to give some credit. I had to come home. I came home early today on the way to a doc's appointment, and I got home around 2 o'clock. And usually, the past, when I've gotten home, during that time, I'll see kids wandering up and down Brook Street. And I was fully expecting that. I didn't see a single high school kid in the neighborhood. And I was also expecting the buses too, not being able to get on my driveway for a good 20 minutes. It was very efficient. Again, I didn't see a single high school kid wander the neighborhood. And buses were in and out within five minutes. I want to give credit to the high school for that change today. And I am a little concerned by what I've heard in public participation, so I hope that Dr. Gasper and Mr. Richardson will look into that, but I want to give some credit to that at least.
Thank you. Mr. Gay.
So, um, this is one of my last board meetings. I'm not sure whether we have another one right before the election or not. But I've served as the board representative, if I'm correct. And, uh, that I just wanted to point out to everybody, that will be updated in positions since I'm leaving the board. So, um, they usually meet in person, sometimes have met virtually. But that is something we should think about, making sure that, uh, New Britain is represented.
Thank you. And just briefly, Mr. Santiago, just so you know, as, as a board, we're not allowed to address back, just so, like, we definitely heard you. Um, any other board reports?
I just want to say, since I get a lot of complaining about kids on the playground one year and go by early in the morning and then right near the close to have the school closed. And I was shocked because the playground was empty, and hopefully everybody was in the building. I saw a couple of kids who, they, when I stopped, my granddaughter was horrified. "What are you saying, babe?" For, but when I stopped, I said, "Dad, where are you going? School is still in." They go, "Oh, we helped early this month." I go, "I'm not buying that, but okay."
Thank you.
This is me.
I participated last week in the nomination committee for CAEB for the new executive officers. It's very interesting, very informative. Lot that they offer that I learned about, met a lot of people, which was really nice to commiserate with other, um, districts, board members, and nice to make those connections. Definitely.
Yeah. So, anyone else? I have a quick one, and I'll just do it before superintendent's report. So you may notice some new faces to my right. These are our student reps. Right? So we did not put you on the agenda. We didn't want to put you on the spot, but we did discuss that you guys would, coming up, they would, they're going to split two and two, and then they'll have board reports, and they are supposed to reach out wide, not just New Britain High. So if you want to just take a quick second and introduce yourselves, that'd be great.
All right. Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Young Paul. I'm a senior at New Braun High School. And it's an honor to be here in front of all of you. And I just want to be able to contribute as much as I can to this, uh, school district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, hi. My name is Daniel Senior. I'm a senior at New Braun High School. I'm kind of everywhere around the community that I can be, so if you see me around, please say hi. I'm excited to be here and learn new things. So that's me.
Hi, everyone. I'm Janaya Moore. I'm also a senior at New Braun High School. And just like they said, I'm happy to be here, and I hope to help make some changes around the school. And if you see me in public, of course, come say hi. And I'm also like Daniel, I'm all around. So if you come to see, like, high schools musicals or the band perform, look for me there and say hi.
Hi. My name's Ariana Muhammad. I'm also a senior at New Braun High School, and I'm just really excited to be here. Thank you. So.
Over the summer, uh, Diana and Joey and I heard Ariana speak at the CAEB conference, and we were very impressed.
She did. She did so.
Where was I?
She did a very proud.
You didn't go.
You weren't there.
I wasn't there.
She did a very proud.
Just at the CAEB conference.
No, it was the Summer Leadership Conference.
Oh, that one.
Really well. And I've been watching Daniel's videos. Those were really great. I love those.
And the three of us all turned and said, "I hope she's going to be the board representative."
Perfect. All right. Well, welcome aboard. So superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I want to thank the members of the public who spoke tonight. Because part of my presence tonight is actually about the high school and student conduct at the high school, I will just say that I am aware of the incident that happened, and I'm pursuing it as strictly as I possibly can within the law.
Thank you for that.
So we're going to do our superintendent's reports a little bit differently this year. I'm going to call, Mr. Richardson and Ms. Soler have a very brief presentation for us tonight. I thought we would kind of mix in my traditional report to you about things that are appearing in the dispatch, also with some program, uh, programming updates. They're going to talk to us about SBDI, the School-Based Diversion Initiative. And it, it ties into the, to the topic that we heard about from the public tonight about having clear expectations for behavior, but also supports and, and teaching opportunities as well. Ms. Soler.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so this is kind of twofold. It's going to be, one, it's going to cover the Connecticut School-Based Diversion Initiative, which is actually a grant that three schools will be receiving, and there's some good things that are coming with the grant. And then the second part would be Vector Solutions, what we also know as Safe Schools, that the teachers, we have it for teachers or staff platform, but we're going to be adding it for students. So as far as the SBDI grant, the mission of SBDI is to reduce rate of in-school arrests, expulsion, and out-of-school suspension. By doing this, it helps kids stay in school, improve student outcome, and ensure that students receive a fair and equitable school discipline regardless of mental health, special education needs, or demographic characteristics such as race and ethnicity. So the grant is $54,500, and it's going to be split into three different parts. One of them, we're hoping to use $23,280 for Vector Solutions. Then the $8,714 is going to be split between the three schools that are participating, which are Slade, Palasque, and New Braun High, for extra earnings. There is some work to be done with SBDI. There's a leader in residence that needs to do extra work, and so there's some money there for extra earnings for any work that has to be done outside of contractual time. And then each school will receive $7,502 in order to buy supplies for their PBIS store or pay for incentives that are aligned with their SBDI goal. The staff will also receive three professional development sessions. There are two that are mandatory, adolescent behavior and recognizing trauma, and classroom management and crisis de-escalation. The third one is going to be based on survey results. All the staff will take a survey, and depending on the results, the admins can then choose if they want to do vicarious trauma for educators or positive school climate culture and connectedness. Each school will complete a workbook that is going to include their goal. And the goals are around, like, as I mentioned, decreasing school arrests, school suspension and expulsion, and increasing 211 calls. So the idea is that we reduce 911 calls and increase 211 calls. Any questions on SBDI grant?
Have you ever called? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I was just going to ask if you've ever called personally, if you've ever called 211.
Yes, I have.
Okay. Well, so you're taking calls off of 911 and putting them, that's the design of the program, right?
Right. So the idea is 211, um, could, so when you call 911, it goes to the police, and sometimes the students are not getting the service. Yeah, they're not, they're not given the service that the child might actually need. So that's why they say increase 211 calls, so they can get a clinician in the building and, and help the child as much as possible with what they actually depend on.
No, no, no. I just know what, in reality, is serviced in the state of Connecticut, and I'm just trying to see where the balance is. It's a logical mom brain for kids in crisis. So if I ever use that as a blanket statement, but I'm going to write that down. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
So as far as, um, the next, um, two slides are on Vector Solutions. Vector Solutions has four libraries with powerful, engaging student safety and wellness courses that cover a wide, variety of safety, wellness, and social and emotional learning topics. Course features diverse peer presenters and unique age-appropriate, um, for grades six through 12 and nine, I'm sorry, six through eight, and then nine through 12. So although they have the same topics, they're a little, they're split up so that it's middle school appropriate and then high school appropriate. Vector Solutions has also aligned their videos to CASL, the core competencies, and, um, and it supports educators and integrating these modules into their SCL program. Again, it's for Palasque, Slade, and, um, New Braun High, so it'll service a little bit over 4,000 students, about 4,005 students. With the cost of the $23,280, we also get it in Spanish and Arabic. So the videos will be available in Spanish and Arabic for the students. This is going to go through Curriculum Committee on October 16th with more details, and then finance on 10/23. And just a little bit more information on the libraries. It includes videos on substance misuse prevention, mental health and well-being, healthy relationships and inclusion, and personal and community safety. Each video also comes with a pre and post-assessment. We can turn those on and off if we want, or we can change the, uh, we can reduce the amount of questions. And it also comes with a lesson plan for the teachers, and we can include inserts within the videos, our own, let's say, QR codes where the child can then access, um, a scoop of board policy and look at it, let's say bullying or something. They can access it. We can insert our own videos. Maybe Dr. Gasper is giving some information on bringing weapons to school, anything like that. We can insert our own, or even a Google form. So if we wanted, if a child is looking at a bullying video and they're experiencing some bullying or know something, they, we can insert a Google form where they can record it and receive help. And that would go right into the videos that they're watching. For grades six through eight, they'll be using these videos during, during advisory class. And then nine through 12, they will be assigned through counselor during career connections. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Richardson, anything further?
No, I was going to say, we're not asking for a vote tonight, right? More information will be coming soon.
Thank you both. So, Madam President, as has become tradition, the rest of my report is in the District Dispatch for Board Members. As always, it's, uh, it's a fantastic-looking document. Great, um, overview and summary of our Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program in this month's issue. I was saying earlier that it's, I hope you'll read it. It's a heartwarming story about kids feeling at home in their new school where kids are. feeling at home in their new school, where kids are of similar situation as they. It's a great example of how the city, the board, and the school works together, really, and such thing wouldn't be possible without the upgrades to Chamberlain as a building. So it's a really wonderful example of a great program now being even better inside of a building that's been custom designed for that program. So I hope that the board will enjoy this month's dispatch, and that's my report for this evening.
Awesome. Thank you. Move into a presentation on 2023 Smarter Balance Assessment SATs and NGSS Overview.
So as Ms. Velazquez comes to the microphone, as the board's aware, we received our annual results from the SBA state test. As the board has seen a few times now in a few different ways, we have some definite things to celebrate, but also plenty of work left to do with regard to our academics. So I'm going to do the first few slides as Ms. Edwards brings them up, and then Ms. Velazquez is going to give you much more detail on how the district fared overall. Is it now working for you, Asia?
No.
So what I'll do then is kind of talk the board through while we, you can keep trying, and I'll talk the board through the first few slides, so we don't have to wait too long. If it comes up, we'll be able to see it on the screen. So looking at the title page, you can see Smarter Balance Assessment SAT and NGSS Overview. And then the next slide is titled One Year Change: The Percent of Kids Who Are at or Above Grade Level. So this is something that I've updated the board on in my weekly email to you. This is, we're going to talk tonight about two different ways of measuring student progress. One is how many students are at or above grade level. The other is a little bit more complex, but Ms. Velazquez will talk us through that. It's about growth. So my first kind of introductory slides here is, as you can see, as a district, we saw a negative .5 percentage point drop, which was just a little bit less, which was just a little bit less of a drop than the statewide drop. So there was a statewide drop of .6 of a percentage point here in New Bern. We saw a little bit less than the statewide drop as a district. Better news in math, we saw a 2.7 percentage point increase. The state also saw an increase, but our increase was greater than the statewide increase. So optimistically, you can say we have better news in both categories, both ELA. Of course, we don't like to see the downward trend, but our downward trend was not quite as bad as the statewide. On the next slide, you see grade level year over year 2022 and 2023. This is a very simple data display. I like to call this a dashboard. I apologize if you guys have it in black and white, with Asian color in your online packet. So you can see in a few places, we've got ELA, math, and science. These are the statewide tests. You can see science is not given in every grade. Science is given in grades five, eight, and 11. In ELA, the best way to put it is we have mixed results. Some grades are up, some grades are down. Grade three being flat. Anything within up or down one percentage point, I would personally call a flat. So we can see it's really a mixed bag there, and that ties in with the previous slide of being down about half a percentage point overall. In the math column, you can see the news is much better, where we have grades three, four, five, and six, all showing really good increases. A 6.2% increase overall in grade four for math is a very strong one-year change. We can see, I would call it flat in grade seven and eight, and then slightly down of 1.3 percentage points in grade 11.
Dr. Gaspard, still an observation, it seems like the grades that have the far, closest to the close pandemic, younger grades, they seem like they're the biggest increases, the most quickest recovery. See, that's probably these.
It's a theory. It's, you know.
They're recovering the fastest.
It's hard to say, because recovery would, if they weren't recovering, they would at least be flat. So the downward, the downward movement is something that we're obviously looking at very closely. As I meet with all the principals, we're looking at it right down to the classroom level. How did that classroom do last year? Where are those students now? So it's possible, what you've noticed is possible. I don't know if it's a, I haven't heard about such a trend statewide or nationwide, so I don't know if it's directly connected to the pandemic, but it's certainly a possibility. You can see the concern is science. We show downward trend in all three of those grade levels, and that's obviously something that we'll be looking at very closely to make sure that our materials, our curriculum, and our instruction are what they should be. And my last slide, and then I'll be happy to take any questions at this point before we turn it over to Ms. Velazquez, who has a much more detailed, is plotting New Bern alongside the state. So the dashed lines at the top are for ELA and math, the statewide averages, and our lines are below. It's a trend going back to 2015, 2016. You can see more or less our trend kind of, our trend lines match the statewide trend lines, right? My goal is to make those go up much more quickly and close the gap to the statewide average to the degree that we can, but I just wanted to make sure you had this kind of perspective. As you can see, the rises and the dips of our lines, the solid lines toward the bottom are pretty much in line with the rises and the dips that you see in the statewide data. So I'm happy to take any brief questions at this point before, I have one more slide? Thank you, Ms. Velazquez. Oh, the Islands of Excellence that we celebrated with our schools. So there are some really notable achievements here. The board saw this in a video that I did celebrating the staff and celebrating our kids, of course. 5.7% ELA third grade at Dioretto. And I won't read all of these to you, but these are here because they're really remarkable one-year positive change, right? And my goal of this project that we call Islands of Excellence is to show ourselves that our own people, our own teachers, are making this kind of impact, and how can we learn from each other? And this is, in fact, already happening. So we have principals going to visit other principals, coaches going to other schools to visit other coaches to learn, how are we seeing this change, and how can we learn from each other across the school district? Not just always relying on outside help from consultants and other trainers, but really realizing that we have people, for example, Smith fifth grade.
That's not an island of excellence, that's a continent of excellence.
Well, we want to make it a continent. We want to make, it's certainly quite high above, it's quite high above sea level, that's for sure. That's for sure.
Thirty percent, it was 30% improvement.
Yeah, and as you can see, most notably, in both of those cases for Smith, they've more than recovered from the pandemic. So that's why I showed those five-year numbers there. So they've more than recovered from the pre-pandemic numbers. So we've got really good work happening in spots, as I set up my convocation. Why am I so confident? Because we're already doing it. We're just not doing it enough. So our goal is to build upon this, so these results continue to grow. As I've said to the board many times, it will not be quick. It will be a long process. It'll be years of a process, but I still remain really quite confident. So now, before I turn it over to Ms. Velazquez, if you have any questions about those slides, I'd be happy to answer what I can.
Oh, I went to Smith. I'm going to wait. Good island.
Okay. So the next metric is quite more complex than just saying who's on grade level. It's a metric that comes from the State Department. They calculate it, and Ms. Velazquez is going to talk us through that.
Great. I'm just going to wait until Ms. Edwards gets to that slide.
Oh, she's got it. Great.
We're going to go to the average percent growth targeted achieved, that slide there. So up till now, all the slides that you've seen, even the trend data for SBA was all based on proficiency scores, right? Even the islands, we talked about how many more students were in the proficient level. But we wanted to make sure that we started the year explaining to you what the average percent growth target achieved for many reasons. One is that in our district growth plan, in our school improvement plans, we're talking about this metric, and so we want to make sure that you understand when we come to you and present, that this will, we'll be talking again about this metric. But also because of this, we have, the percentage of students who are at grade level is not anywhere where we want it to be, right? There's just a few students who are at those levels. And so the work of the district then becomes this, understanding everywhere a student is according to the state test, and then trying to understand to what degree are we impactful, to what degree are we able to move those students, and we call that growth, right? And so we really want to make sure that people aren't just thinking about the proficiency level, but that we're thinking about growth for all the students, no matter where they fall on that scale score, okay? And so on this slide, what you'll see is I'm attempting to teach you what this metric means, and so I'll give it a go, all right? So what the metric tells you is, if you look at the schematic there, I've got three students listed on my roster, all right? So we have Melba, who, once she takes the test in third grade, when the teacher gets the score, I know that Melba also has a plus 64 target, right? Which is based on whatever scale score she had, the state assigns a number for which we need to, right, impactfully grow her knowledge, so that when she takes the test again, right, she meets that target or exceeds it, all right? And so that's true here for Joaquin and Stan. They each get their own target based on what their scale score was when they take the test in third grade. So in fourth grade then, we see the actual, right? They take the test again, and we see how many more points they achieved on their scale score, right? And so you see Melba achieved 30% more, Joaquin 100%, Stan 50%, right? So those metrics we get for every student. They have to take the test two times in order for that metric to show up, right? And so for a, this is just a roster of three, but you can imagine, if I'm a teacher, I have more like 25 students on a roster, right? And then that last column, that percent target achieved, right, I'm looking for the average. In this particular case, it's 60%, right? So as a classroom, right, I'm a classroom teacher, all my students took the test, and for my classroom, the average percent target achieved was 60%, okay? All right. So then you can imagine, if I can calculate that for a group of students who make up a classroom, then I can make, I can have that metric for an entire school, but for an entire district, all right? And so we're going to be using that metric to talk about different groups of students, and then we want it to be 100% or more, right? In order for our students to keep moving up that scale score, to be achieving more each grade level, we want that percentage to be as high as possible, all right? So then, we took that and we go to the next slide. You'll see that we've given you all the schools that take Smarter Balance, and we're showing you what the district average percent target was for the administration of Spring 2023. And we've also shown you what that metric is for each of the schools, for both ELA and math. Beyond that, I've also indicated in the green where any of the, where that metric beats the state test, right, the state administration. So at the state, the percent target in ELA was 57.3, and for math, it was 61.8. You see, for instance, GAFNE, right, their metric is more than that for each of the tests, for ELA and math. So in other words, at GAFNE, the students grew, right, at a higher rate than the average in the entire state, right? Okay. We're looking at places like that. It's another way to define an island of excellence, right? We're trying to figure out which of the teachers, year in, year out, are moving students the furthest, right? Because we know as a class, their average continues to be really strong. So we're doing that analysis, and this is just one cut, right? This is just comparing the schools, and you see 11 instances where that was true here, where they were above the state average. That was a lot. So there's questions about the average percent of target. How are my teaching skills, Mr. Gaspard?
Teaching skills are. No, I understand. I'm just curious, how does the state assign that target goal? I mean, let's say a student's score is low, are they going to set the goal more aggressively to try to get that kid caught up to grade level if it's a struggling student? You know, the chances are that target may not be achieved. How does that?
Yeah, absolutely. It's more aggressive at the lower levels, right? They have further to go, further to grow, right, in some instances, but we have a chart that shows by every level on the test, what it takes to grow one year, yeah, and what the target will be for each student.
So more aggressive for students who are already scoring at a lower level?
Yes.
Where's Hal's up here?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I left them off the list. I will certainly make that.
And we could send the.
Take the test as well.
And we'll send the board an update with those numbers for Hal's.
Absolutely, yes.
So the growth plans, each school has a growth plan?
Correct. So last year, we developed a district-wide growth plan, a DGP, and we really left that up to a consensus of the principals. The principals chose this metric for the district growth plan. So there's percentage, average percent of growth target achieved. Ms. Velazquez and I tried to come up with a good acronym for that, but it doesn't, apt good, apt good, doesn't sound good. So this is the chosen metric by the principals. They said, we like this metric, we think it tells us more. I wasn't convinced at first, but now I think I am. It does tell us more, because it measures, as Ms. Velazquez says, the whole spectrum of kids. And the task that all the principals are undergoing right now, with a due date later this month, is to develop a school growth plan that has as direct as possible ties to the district growth plan. So that's more possible in some areas. So for example, at the high school, we will need to use the SAT as the metric or the PSAT. These numbers are based on a test that's not given in high school. But to the greatest degree possible, they're expected to find a thread of connection for ELA, math, and rigorous instruction in the classroom. Those are the three, there's only three areas in the district growth plan. It's simple on purpose to give us a lot of focus. So it's these two metrics plus instructional rigor in the classroom.
Where can, is there a place to see what that is? I wasn't, not until seeing it in here, wasn't aware.
I can certainly share it with the board.
Okay.
Yep.
I was just curious. And so each administrator then says, okay, and we're going to achieve X percent?
Exactly. So that's the work right now of Ms. Velazquez, Mr. Richardson, and soon to be Ms. Bordello, who's here again with us tonight, to make sure that those goals are what we call rigorous but attainable. So as you've heard me say at this table, a good goal makes you a little bit nervous. So that's the process we're going through right now. As an aside, something that we're also doing is, of those three goals, I expect one to be what I call wide, one narrow, and one gap. So one of those goals will be wide, meaning it impacts the whole school. This is, this is work that the whole school needs to work on. A narrow goal is, we expect the principal to spot a low spot in their data that's having an overall negative effect on their school-wide data, right? So, oh, our overall scores would be much better if this grade could come up.
Gotcha.
So that's called the narrow goal.
But if the second grade is bringing us down, so we'll focus on the second.
Perhaps, perhaps, exactly. Or it could be a subtest within mathematics. And then the gap goal is about equity. Is there a demographic within your school that is showing a greater gap than others? Is it your ML gap, or your gender gap, ethnicity, race and ethnicity gap, special ed gap? So they're expected to, for those three things, one is a wide, one is a narrow, one is a gap. And the purpose of that activity is to have the principal and their leadership team look really deeply at their data and say, which is the thing that is spread across? And then the next step for each principal that we've talked about with them is, then their leadership actions need to tie to the scale of the goal. So for the wide goal, those are the things you'll talk about at all-staff meetings and all-staff PD days. For the narrow goal, for example, if second grade was selected, it's, oh, I need to get my second-grade teachers some extra coaching, some extra resources, some extra support. And then the gap, what are some strategies that are proven to help the group that I've selected for my gap goal to make an improvement in equity?
Don't you? Now, there's SCA and Brookside and whatever aren't part of any of this stuff.
They're not in this data, because SCA and Brookside are predominantly taking the high school tests, of course. Hal's was accidentally omitted from the data, but we'll get that updated for you.
Okay.
I was thinking of the data for the three middle schools, Dioretto, Palaske, and Slade, and you got to. You got a wide range in that one. Are they working, the three principals working together on that?
So the trouble with this data is how we get it from the state is Delarado is not broken out by its elementary component and its middle component. So Delarado will always require a closer look at the data. It's both. It's neither fish nor a fowl when you compare it to Vance or Pulaski. And this, but this is how the data is delivered to us from the state level. We can disbragate that at our level, but when we're kind of comparing school to school, this is how it arrives to us.
How about like first lady and Pulaski are comparing it, are they working together trying to read the numbers up?
Mr. Richardson is on it.
So we just have two more slides, John.
Mr. Kane had one more.
Sorry, just to follow up to my question on how those target scores are generated. If you have a school, just let's take Pulaski, where students are already behind and now they have more aggressive targets in order to meet them, is it then going to be more challenging for that school to then achieve an average percentage of growth because the targets are so much more aggressive? So like they're already in the hole and now you're asking them to move two years or a year and a half growth instead of a year growth? And they're still showing up as below average as far as percentage gain because they're so far behind to get them? Yeah?
Would you like to answer that? So, so I-
Well, we need a G Kopalakrishnan from the State Department of Education to give you the real answer to that. But as an armchair statistician, what I would tell you is when there's more growth available, the growth can and should come more easily. If a student is already at or above grade level, growth from there, there's, you're going to bump up against the ceiling quite quickly, in other words. So I'm not a scholar in the metric, but I know enough or what I know of it, I should say. I think it's the best metric available that comes from the state. We, of course, matched it up against the earlier part about who's on grade level. But we also use our local assessments, like I Ready. And this year adding things like DIBELS and ERLA that go along with the ARC reading program. So no one metric tells us everything about any particular kid, of course. But it's, and I guess the other answer to that, which is, it's a very good question, is it's all relative, right? This is about helping us spot our own islands of excellence and saying, hey, Ms. Rivera down the hall, she's on to something. I need to send the other teachers from that grade to go see Ms. Rivera because consistently over time, so I don't want to say the numbers don't matter. The change in the numbers matter. And the teacher who's got consistently good results tells us, she's on to something. She, we can learn from her and I'm going to send more teachers to go observe her class.
Thank you. You mentioned the other test, but we're comparing against those to this to make sure we're not like, something's not askew?
It's a complete picture, yes. So there's no one test. So what I like to say about this test, the SBA, SBACK as it was previously called, is it's not everything, but it's also not nothing.
Right, okay.
Right?
I just, if we're at cross purposes with other things that we're seeing-
Exactly. So we're looking at this test, we're looking at how well these kids do once they go into high school and they're taking the PSAT and the SAT. These other two new tests that we're really just learning as a staff. One is called ERLA, one is called DIBELS. Those are for the early grades in reading. We're doing our best to create a complete picture of the kid. And when something stands out, we've got people who are really skilled at deducing that. We've got our teachers, we've got our coaches, we've got specialists like Ms. Stewart, who specializes in literacy for us. So when something is an outlier, when something is askew, we'll be able to know, oh, was that Mr. Gasper's whole class or was that just one kid and why?
Okay, so back to the slides. The last two use this average percent target achieved. And this is, the first slide is students with disabilities. So we want to ensure that, for instance, you're looking at that blue bar and the orange bar. So the blue bar indicates students with disabilities who took the ELA test. And then their non-disabled peers are in orange. And so we're looking for those to be as close as possible, but also to be as high as possible, right? And so there's very little discrepancy there, we see. And then you can see it for three years in a row, right? In twenty twenty-three, the forty-six point seven represents students with disabilities. And then the orange is their non-disabled peers, right? So there, the spread is a little bit more. I want to dig in there and find out what's happening at each of the schools. Again, this is students with disabilities who took the test anywhere in our district. Of note is that in ELA, we were below the state average, but in math, we matched the state average. The next slide is multilingual students, a similar analysis there. There we are, we're looking at ELA for multilingual students and then as compared to non-English students. And you see that we want to make sure that those are not very far apart, but also we want them as high as possible. And in that case, the average for multilingual growth in ELA was above the state average as well as the math. So we know we're growing a little bit better than the state average and that's a good thing. But again, digging in there to make sure where our multilingual learners across the district is important to know as well. The next slide just gives you a narrative about what we've been saying. You know, why is it important to look at the data this way? If we, again, if we only looked at what was proficient and we don't see as many students there, we would only be talking about a very small percentage of students. We want to make sure we're growing students across that, at all the levels. Thank you.
Any other question? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Velazquez. We made it to the minutes.
I was just going to say, we just made it to the minute. All right, so new business, item A. Is there a motion to approve minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting on September fifth? Mr. Kane, anything on there? No? Okay.
Am I the editor?
May I have a motion to accept the enrollment report?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item C, is there a motion to accept report of personal transaction and extracurricular appointments?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to the financial report. I have a motion to accept the financial report from thirty, twenty twenty-three and August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Remove.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item E, may I have a motion for a contract extension between CSDNB and Community Health Services, Inc. to provide mental health services district-wide?
Madam Chair, if I may, I want to recommend that the board consider tabling this item at this time, if I could so recommend. Mr. Spalding and I have been in communication with Community Health Center. We have a meeting scheduled soon, I think, Mr. Spalding, right? Is it the coming week? Okay. What is new that we're learning that I want to make sure that the board is fully apprised of, that we want to gather more information on is some services to our students which previously had been free of charge, we believe this proposed contract includes a fee schedule. Now, while the contract does say that no student will be turned away, the contract appears to almost say the opposite in that they will be looking to collect fees. It says that they won't pursue debt collection and things like that. So we're concerned about, CHC has been a very good partner. We have been able to freely recommend students go to these clinics and get services because in the past, they've been free of charge to the students, free of charge to the district because they were charged directly to Husky or to Medicaid. It appears as though that this provider is looking to change that within their contract. So I'd prefer to come back to the board with much more information after Mr. Spalding and I have spoken directly to the contractor.
So Mr. Alli suggested? Point of order. Do we need me to, because we just, we didn't have a discussion, but we need to, I have to motion it so somebody can table it. So I need a motion.
So motion.
Second. Motion to table?
Motion to table.
Perfect, motion to table.
Thank you, and we will keep you apprised as we learn more.
All right, item F, I'm hoping. Is there a motion to approve the proposed policy regarding cell phones?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm looking over this policy and as a high school teacher, I kind of, I would say it's a little weak.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I look at some schools, where in my old school, seventy-seven percent of our discipline issues involve cell phones somewhat. And looking and hearing of this issue we had tonight, if you look back, cellphone is probably involved in some way of communication and stuff. And I talked to, you know, we're allowing kids to have cell phones, but there's no really talk about, unless I'm missing in here, as I read it a couple of times, any teeth to it? What happens if a student is caught using a cellphone during class, for example, or using a cellphone improperly? Am I missing that somewhere in here or is there a regulation?
That level of specificity isn't typically in the policy. It would be in the admin regulations and or the student parent handbook at the school level.
Right. So do you have any recommended changes that we can refer to policy?
I just think folks know that cell phones should be banned in school, but-
Well, define banned.
I mean, Mr. Richardson, as you heard, really thoroughly researched this. That's not supported by the survey data, both from parents and teachers and the kids themselves. But we will obviously faithfully implement whatever policy the board adopts. The issue at this point is there is no board policy. Right now, the board is mute on the whole issue of cell phones.
And it's been, and you hear it several times from conversations with anybody in any of the schools that they need something on cell phones to come from the top down, right? So if you don't have recommendations, maybe pause for a minute if anybody else has any input on-
Are there any cell pouches in schools that are-
They are not, they're expensive at the moment, I believe.
And no pouches in these communities? We ruled them out in Red School and in Hartford, and it is cut down on discipline a lot.
You ruled them out or ruled them out?
We ruled them out. We ruled them out in May and we went down by forty percent discipline issues in one month. Kids could not communicate.
So if I may, the first step would be for the board to say whether, how and why they're welcome in a school. And then next is an implementation such as that that would come from administration.
Right, because maybe just having the policy and allowing administrators to say, give me your phone or put your phone away, maybe that curbs it. And if not, maybe you go to level two and you start using the pouches, right?
But I mean, I've heard, I've heard both success and lack of success stories about such pouches.
Yeah.
I think what Mr. Richardson and I are recommending to you tonight is right now you have no statement. The board has no statement on whether or the ways in which cell phones are appropriate or inappropriate in schools.
So you're saying this could be the first step. The next step, you guys could look into administrative reg, allow it, policies or something, ban, value ban or something.
So right now, as you're, obviously I know practically, I know from my experience, but as far as board policy goes, I have no formal statement from the board saying, are phones available and okay everywhere or are they okay nowhere?
Right.
So this is step one. And then enforcement of this, that's where admin regs come in. And even more specifically, things like yonder pouches wouldn't be, it's too specific to even be an admin reg. Those would be in a student parent handbook at the school level. And that's how, that's how school administration and the superintendent would choose to implement a board policy.
I have a question. Should we ask the teachers? I mean, because it's impacting, you know?
So there's actually, if you, there actually is the presentation that he gave us? Thank you. They did a survey and the students, teachers, parents, they all basically agreed with how the policy is written.
This policy was tested based on the survey.
Right.
Yeah, I want to say Mr. Richardson, along with his team, did a very good job of crafting this recommended policy. It wasn't a creative writing assignment, it was taken very heavily from cave, from cave model policies, right? And I think when he spoke to you that even cave, your association recognizes that this is a difficult issue. It's not as simple as saying ban them everywhere because I would say that we heard the student who spoke so passionately tonight about a negative thing, actually talked about cell phones and bathrooms, excuse me, bathrooms. One of the ways bathrooms are getting better is because we're using e-passes on kids' phones, which lets us know how long they've been away from the class they left and their destination. So, and I would venture a guess that almost everybody at this table right now has one in their pocket, right? Cell phones are a way of life. Next up is the board's going to have to deal with artificial intelligence in the same way. It's not going away. And to believe that it's invisible and we can just ban it is kind of a fool's errand. So I really do strongly support and recommend the work by Mr. Richardson on this. Getting to things like yonder pouches, in my opinion, no such kind of proper noun should be in a board policy. It should say, you know, you pass a policy, then you charge the superintendent with making it come true.
Well, the first step, I'll support it then, is the first step.
Right, so just, you know, one little tidbit. So bus rides are the number one thing that students, students said is when they should use their cell phone. That didn't even come from like parents or teachers. That's from the students who responded. It says, I should only use my phone on the bus ride. That was ninety-one percent of those that responded. So I thought it was, I don't know.
Maybe if you ask the nicer to start.
And I like the line in here, parents should refrain. Because I remember that was one of the biggest offenders is when I, when we had kids, they, oh, my mom's texting me, my mom's calling me.
Yeah.
And I look over and it is the mom. What do you want for dinner tonight?
So do you have any recommended changes to the policy?
Other than, other than just like more teeth, but as I said, the first step, I trust that he will start the admin regs, start enforcement and continue-
Policy is always the first step. Yep.
Any other discussion? Anything from our students? No?
You guys have to live with this.
That is true.
And really, how bad is the cell phone use in high school?
I would say most people have self-control to the point where they aren't always on their cell phones. Although a lot of us like to listen to music, but some of us, that actually helps us focus. Like I know for me, if I put music on, it helps me focus more on the schoolwork that I'm doing. And, but for other kids, it could be an issue, but I would say it's not fair to implement like a banning rule amongst all of them, especially for kids who like just want to use their phones for music, so.
Or making TikToks.
I mean, yeah.
But you do it in a very respectful, like it's almost like a learning thing, right? Like you do it as part of-
I definitely see the issue with cell phones. I would think I'd be ignorant to like completely ignore that there's no issue with it. But like she said, it's like definitely a student to student thing. And I think an overall rule to ban for all students would be kind of contradictory, especially with, like you said, the passes. I did passes on my phone. Without that, I would kind of be like, my computer in the hallway, walking out to the bathroom, that's kind of like, it's kind of silly. Walking around with that to class, so I mean-
More into the bathroom with it.
Yeah, or into the bathroom with a computer, it's kind of just like, yeah.
I think if you tried to ban them, parents would be more upset about it because they want to have a way, they want to have a way to get home.
When we ruled out the yonder pouches, it was the parents who were more upset than the kids. The kids were like fine with it, the parents were the ones who were upset.
They want that lifeline. That's, cell phones to a parent have been the best thing that ever happened. Because now they can keep in touch with them. Any other discussion?
So just from the superintendent, you know, please do not expect full implementation of this policy tomorrow. There's a lot of communication to do with staff, school leaders, parents, kids. But we will get to work right away, but it's obviously for some people, it will be a big change. So we will get busy with the work of implementing it right away. But, you know, compliance will take a lot of communication and some training.
I think the message will get out, though, that we did pass something tonight.
It'll be out, yeah.
The four of them will send the word out, right?
It'll be out.
In the group, chavenger cell phone.
Exactly. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Madam President, the item to be added, do you want to do that under new business now, or add it to the consent?
Yes, gonna do it after visitor protocol.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Perfect. Is there a motion to approve the policy regarding visitor protocol, which is on page 140? Any discussion?
I would just say similarly, there are some fairly broad changes here to how business is currently being done. We will get to work coming into compliance with this protocol as, this policy as quickly as possible, but it will take time. And just a reminder that I want to thank the board for your support. This is something that was mentioned specifically in our, our security audit. So I'm happy to get to work on addressing that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. I would like a motion to add an item to the agenda, if I so may.
Any opposed of conspect wasn't enough?
I know. Did I have a motion in a second?
No, someone's.
You didn't tell us why. Oh, oh, I, well, you need to, oh, to add.
Are we going like down the yellowport road? What are we doing?
Yeah, just.
What's that?
I moved it.
Add an item, my Homes Elementary renovation schematic.
I moved.
Second.
Okay.
All right. So the item is added. May I have a motion to approve the Homes Elementary renovation schematic?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick clarifying question, if I may, just as a music teacher and.
And where's the music group?
Yeah, I was looking, the music, instrumental music, since can share with stage, but then looking at the drawing, there's actually a designated space. So I'm just wondering which was what we're going to do.
So Mr. Slade, did you know that, that answer? Thank you. And perhaps just a quick overview, what's the difference between a schematic and an edspec so that the board can be assured?
Okay, the schematic is basically a, like the footprint, if you're looking simply down, you know, from a sky level view, this shows you the footprint of the building, as opposed to the design phase, which will then get into what kind of cabinets we'll have, will there be sinks in every classroom. Some of the questions that you had asked at the committee meeting, those are the more details that we'll get to a little bit later. But to answer the, Mr. Kane's question, there is a classroom music, and then it's also instrumental. And the stage would be for that itinerant that comes in, because sometimes you'll have both brass music going on at one time, and then the string person happens to come in at the same time, so the auditorium would be used in that case.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Even like a music teacher, that is.
Thank you, Mr. Slade.
Thank you. Any other questions?
What is HCT?
I don't know. What is HCT? Where, where are you seeing that?
Kind of spread out.
I'm trying to figure out if it's your little bathrooms or.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out their bathrooms. I just.
My eyes don't even let me see that anymore.
Give me an example of like, lower left.
Right in the middle, smack down the middle. There's some K classrooms.
It's, looks like a store.
Right side of the.
Are you aware, Mr. Slade, what does HCT stand for?
Is that handicap toilet?
Oh, maybe because it's in the.
I don't have anything in.
Oh, it's actually in the kindergarten rooms?
I think, yeah, handicap toilet, yeah.
Right, because the primary grades would have, in classroom bathrooms.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Swinging, yeah. Is there social worker, mother, like the nurse? Yeah, HCT, and then nurse, HCT, HCT, handicap. All right. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Is there anyone who would like to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Can I make a comment about the consent agenda without pulling anything off? Because I really don't want to vote on it. I just want to make comment. I know, I know, I know. So if you actually, if you peruse some of the items that are on consent, and some of the things that we were able to pay typically with budget, we're actually using Escher funds. And those Escher funds are going to run out. So it's just something to just keep in the back of your head. Some of these are with contracted one-on-one nurses, right? We're using Escher funds instead of being able to pay out of our budget. So something to just, just a couple of them, actually. I, you know, we did talk about that in the Santana, so that's something for further future. All right, so nobody wants to pull anything off the consent agenda? And we don't have those, right?
May I have?
May I have a motion to go into an executive session to discuss possible public act, oh, to discuss the superintendent's contracts?
So moved, second.
All those. Oh, I need to bring back the full board and Dr. Gasper. And students, if you would like to go home, this is, this will be the end. So you guys can go home and.
Listen, homework.
This is part of the ride. Yeah. You could do your homework here and wait until we come back out. It's only up to you.
We don't have to.
But you don't, definitely don't have to. All right, so all those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, we are back.
Do I have a motion to approve the extension of the superintendent's contract by one year to June 2026, subject to the negotiated terms?
So moved.
Very second. Any discussion?
Not really.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We don't have to go through this, right?
Thank you for the support. I appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn? So moved.